So, this is the August 18th call work session to order animates Mr. Denuser, Police Hutter.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
All right, we do have a court in prison and by way of our work session, we don't ever have a prayer nor do we stand for the pledge. So, we're gonna roll right into our meeting tonight. Y'all should already have the order of the meeting. Did y'all get that? Get your copies, electronic teleconference copies. First thing on item to discuss tonight is regarding the potential education implementation of the Governor's Executive Order currently in effect and other COVID-19 related items. And so, that's kind of broad area as far as what we're gonna discuss tonight. I did see Mr. Jordan, he said we could discuss a couple of those topics under the COVID-19. So, the first order of discussion tonight would be the potential for the education and implementation. Everyone received that particular documentation that initially went out. I'm working between five and, I don't have a hard copy, let me pull that up. Mr. Griffin, could you help me out with that date?
Well, the initial email about the concept of that detail went out on July 17th. And then, the actual plan for that went out on August 5th.
Okay, so, the first time that everybody should have received any kind of information pertaining to this was July 17th. And then, the actual implementation of it went out August 5th. Y'all should have called in with our questions. You guys know, I've been saying this here since day one that I've joined the band, is that whether it was Mr. Jared or is Mr. Griffith, he cannot read minds. And we're gonna have to pick up the phones and say, can we talk about that more in discussion? Can we go further to understand what you just sent out to each of us? If you don't understand it, majority of the time, he and I have already spoken in reference to something. And so, then he sends it out to you guys. He asked Mr. Jordan to back up. And then, he will send it out to you guys as well. So, with that being said, to get a backup a little ways further than this concept, we initially, and I would say initially, when it first went into COVID-19, is that we started, we implemented a program where it's not a program, but the phase of the meetings that Mr. Griffith, we gave him some extended authority to be able to exist through things without contacting us right out the bat in his privy. So, with this particular concept right here that came out, it's been effective, apparently, if it's been going on since July 17th up until, or let me back up. Was that August 5th, Mr. Griffith, that you actually started the first phase of that?
That is correct.
But, the first phase of the educational piece of it?
Actually, Mayor, I'm sorry, July 23rd was when the actual first educational component started with police department officers communicating with the restaurants.
Okay, that was restaurants, not just downtown, but all the restaurants?
All restaurants in the city limits, yes ma'am.
So, since you can kind of better explain that piece to them, how that particular area worked and being proactive as to where we are right now, especially with our college students and everything going on around COVID-19, could you kind of give counsel by way of some information on that tonight?
Yes, ma'am. What was in the plan and the way the plan was operating was based on, when I emailed everyone on July 17th, I mentioned the fact that I had watched the Governor's press conference earlier that day. And he was making a point for local authorities to be the ones enforcing the requirements of the executive order. And that kind of hit home with me. And so, I put some information together that day in terms of between information I put together and information that GMA provided in terms of what possible enforcement options or potential citations existed based at that time on Governor's Order 07312002. And then spoke with Chief Swiker, he and Major Davis. And between the three of us, we put together some educational components. And those educational components were based on the plan that I sent out to everyone on August 5th. And basically, what it boiled down to is there was gonna be, there was to be an educational component for at least two weeks. And then, after that, there would have been a verbal, well, let me back up. The educational component dealt with social distancing and refraining from gathering. Those are the two potential citations that could have been issued based on the Governor's Executive Order. And from there, the implementation after the education piece was, first of all, a verbal warning, secondly, a written warning, thirdly, another written warning. And then, after that third written warning, the officer was gonna have the potential to cite the business owner. And based on the Governor's Executive Order, two citations enabled the municipality to close down the business if they so chose. Never, during the course of implementation of the program before it was pulled last Thursday night, were there any citations issued. There was education, there was conversations that I had with Chief Swiker about those education processes. And I was satisfied with that information that was being passed on. And from there, Councilman Reynolds and I had a text exchange on a Saturday after the first Thursday night of the education piece after our students returned. And that precipitated an email that I sent to everyone on Sunday, August 9th, sharing with everyone what Councilman Reynolds and I had texted back and forth on. And that led to the understanding that there was some additional questions that we wanted to answer for the business owners. And that was when the additional education and enforcement education information for restaurants and dining services as defined by the Governor's Executive Order was put together. And that actually was finalized last Thursday morning and on August 13th, I believe it was, and was sent out to everyone that evening about 5:20 with the understanding for Chief Swiker and Major Davis that that was new information to the business owners. And that was to be used as an educational piece for beginning on the evening of August 13th. And there was to be no citations issued based on that information. And that was, it was at about 10:30, 10:15, 10:30, that particular evening, when the special detail was pulled based on conversations with some council members. So, that's, that got us to the point that we're at tonight.
Okay, so, we're up for discussion right now on this particular table information. And also, Mr. Jordan, you were also in on this with Mr. Griffith and Chief Swiker, am I correct?
Yes, I reviewed what they had put together to make sure that it was in compliance with the Governor's Order. And as I told them, they, pursuant to the Governor's Order, the chief and our police department has the authority to enforce that order as it stands. It's just, it's like any other statute. It's not a statute, but it's, it has the same force and effect as a statute under state law as it stands. What the additional aspect of what I was asked to look at was the educational part of it. And the fact that the way that the chief, Major Davis, and Mr. Griffith were setting it up, they were, they were being more lenient than they could have been under the Governor's Order. And so, I think we were just in those discussions, we had two discussions, as I recall, and those discussions, there was simply, I didn't see that there was a problem in being more lenient. When I say more lenient, that has to do not just with the educational aspect, but it has to do with the fact that we were, we were gonna issue, the plan was to issue more warnings than what the Governor's Emergency Order actually required. And so, I think the feeling among us in that discussion was if we educate the restaurant owners downtown, and they know that we're serious about enforcing it, but we want everybody to simply understand it and do what there's, what the law requires them to do. But that's a much better approach than simply going out and starting to issue citation for warnings and then citations as required by, or allowed by the Governor's Emergency Order. So, that's what I, that's what I was asked to do.
And basically, what I'm trying to do is put all the information on the table.
Sure.
We already have, based around it. And there again, Mr. Griffith shared with us about what brought, what led up to a lot of this as far as the, we don't have any bars in our town as far as occupational tax license or concern. And also, that it had a tie-in to help us out with where we are now with our students coming back on campus and a lot of other activity that would be probably, that we would leave to think that it would be happening once all of this kind of took place. So, what I wanna do is kind of open this area up for discussion. Those, if you have some questions on it, now's the time to ask. Because I wanna ask for us to be able to come to a concise decision on this tonight. Because we do have some other issues going on centered around the college. And so much, not so much as the colleges, let me say this, what the students are doing away from college activity. And so, we had, students came back in, and then they started class on a Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. It's their first day of class. But it was the partying and everything else that led up to a lot of the decision of being proactive before all this got started. So, is it, are there any questions that anybody would like to ask right now?
Is that specifically in regards to the ordinance that we have on the agenda or into as far as Operation Go the Distance and the educational enforcement period is concerned?
Well, that one is stated towards the Operation Go the Distance and the educational piece, Frank, yes sir.
Okay. The questions that I received throughout last Thursday pertain to the frequently asked questions and the guidelines that were issued for Operation Go the Distance locally. Of course, I think, I think we had everyone pretty much on the same page insofar as agreeing to keep kitchens open, being able to operate with a limited venue. But I think what really caused an additional bit of pushback was the decision to include a requirement that restaurants not be allowed to check IDs at the door or nor to be able to charge cover charges, which is, it tracks very closely to the state legislation known as Michael's Law. And I'm just curious as to what the, what the thought process was behind adding that in seemingly, seemingly at the last minute.
And I would also like to add to what Walter said, because that was the basis of all of the questions that I had addressed to me too, was the fact that the last paragraph on there was added that says that there's no, because they cannot, they were not allowed to charge a cover charge. And basically, when I was talking to Chief Swiker and Mr. Griffith in text, and we were talking about after a certain time at night when, when the kitchens normally closed and the restaurants start just serving alcohol and allowing people to come in, they were being told then that they could not charge a cover charge or check ID. So, you know, I'm saying, I know I'm saying the same thing that Walter said, but those are basically the questions that came to us concerning the educational piece.
Well, I can, you want me to speak to that, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
It was, it was included based on the fact that at no other time except after 10 o'clock at night, do restaurants ask for IDs and charge cover charges. So, when you start asking for IDs and charge cover charges, you start teetering on the side of being a bar and having to deal with Joshua's Law in that situation. That's the reason it was, it was put in here. Because if you went to any of these restaurants at noon, you would not be asked for an ID unless maybe you ordering a drink and they wanted to check your age. And you would not have to charge, pay a cover charge in order to get in to eat. So, that's the reason it was added.
Can you say that last sentence again, Hank? Because it broke up really bad.
Yeah, you're breaking up.
I'm not sure which was the last sentence, Ms. Shinholster. So, I mean, thank.
Talking about the Joshua Law, the statement you made about the Joshua Law.
Well, if, when, when restaurants start checking IDs and covering, and charging cover charges, that is teetering on being a bar. And we don't have an occupational tax license for bars, not to mention the fact that you're getting very close at that point in time to having to fall under the Joshua Law state requirements. And then, the last thing I believe I said was, if, if, if a restaurant is not checking IDs and charging a cover charge for people to go in and eat at noon, they should not be charging a cover charge and checking IDs for folks to come in at 10:00 PM.
Okay, Hank, I don't know where you are, but you are really breaking up. You know, part of your words are coming out and part of them are not. I think I got most of it. But, but here's the thing, and this was the question that I had. If we're educating our people downtown, then if, if, if in fact that our requirement is going to be that once they start charging in that way and the kitchen is closed, can they buy an alcohol license to become a bar at a particular time at night? I mean, are we gonna have that option so that they can charge a cover charge, make sure everyone in there, everybody in there is over 20, 21 and over, and make sure that all the staff are 21 and over at a particular time at night and they become a bar?
That would be up.
How does that need to work?
That would be up to council to pass, pass an ordinance to that effect, correct, Mr. Jordan?
Yes, that, Denise, Ms. Shinholster, that would require council to basically adopt a, an additional occupation, a business license relative to bars. All of our establishments, whether they be down, wherever they be, but in downtown, in order for them to receive an alcohol license under the statute, and I'm not saying that it always has worked this way, but under the ordinance, they have to, you know, they have to sell a certain percentage of food in order to even get an alcohol license. We don't issue alcohol under our ordinance. We can, it's up to council, but council can create another category, i.e. being a bar. And the definition of that is, under the Governor's Emergency Order, is that at least 75% of your revenue is generated, as it said, by the sale of alcohol. And keep in mind that, under the Governor's Emergency Order, there are a whole different set of rules for bars than there are for restaurants. But council clearly has, I mean, it's done, you know, Athens has bars, most, probably most college towns have bars. But it would require Mayor and Council to adopt a new business license category. It would have its own pricing for the selling of alcoholic beverages. But yeah, that's what, that's what would be required. And I think that, that really is the dilemma that we have right now, is that, you know, if these licensed establishments right now are licensed as restaurants, and they don't become, they don't become a bar at any point because we don't have, legally, they don't become a bar because we don't have.
Right.
It definitely would be incumbent upon council to consider, you know, a review of that or to make that change. Because what happens from an enforcement standpoint is, again, like I said, even in the Governor's Emergency Orders, bars are treated much differently than restaurants are treated. There are some requirements placed on bars that are not required of restaurants. And so, but you know, that's where we are. And you know, that's a, as you well know, as many of you well know, that's a historical, I don't know what you would exactly refer to, but the history of that, I would say that that's how the ability of restaurants downtown to sell alcohol evolved from a strong opposition at one point against bars downtown. And in a way to allow, you know, restaurants downtown also generated a significant part of their revenue from, from the bar activity due to the college students' presence in our, in our downtown. So, to answer your question that, it would require a, an ordinance change to accomplish that.
The problem comes in the fact that for so many years, I don't know, I'm not gonna say for lack of a better term, looked away or allowed restaurants to change over at a certain time at night. And then, they were only selling alcohol, closed their kitchen down, and started, started, in some cases, started charging cover charges. And we kind of looked away and allowed that to take place. And now, under this educational piece, it's being put out and presented as saying, that's no longer allowed in downtown. And then, that's where the problem began.
Right. I think that's because, I think it's come to light as a result of the Governor's Emergency Orders, where in his orders, he treats restaurants differently from bars. And, and you know, it's just, I agree, I agree with your analysis of it. It has probably been a situation where, you know, kind of wink, wink, look the other, look the other way. But it may be now time to decide whether y'all want to address that. Because again, the requirements on the bars under this emergency order is different than the requirements for the restaurants.
The thing that I wanna mention, and I don't think that it's, I think there's probably some look the other way. But I think there's also a situation that we're very concerned about just having a bar outright. And this was before I got back on campus. Denise and Bo were, your net were part of this. But requirement of the food, and if they met that requirement, then there really was not anything else said about being a bar at, at a particular point in time, as long as they met that requirement. One thing that is different that we did in the community back in the 70s and 80s and 90s was that we did have some bars, but we had bars that decided to serve food because they wanted to supplement their income. They wanted to be open during the day, to have that bar open during the day. And they would serve sandwiches or food or whatever. And that was kind of found out in fact, a way of getting into what we transformed into in the 2000s. But I, I think it's probably past time that we look at how do we go forward here and accommodate what the market dictates?
Right, because, right. Because as you know, a lot of the quote unquote restaurants downtown actually make them a charge of their money late at night from cover charges and the sale of alcohol.
Well, let me, let me shine in a little bit.
Restaurants being open, they are still allowed during the day when they're open, around, I would say, late evening when people are going to dinner. So, what you're saying is they can sell alcohol up until that point, and then they stop and quit, or they don't sell alcohol, missing something here. What were you saying, Mr. Chambers? No, they, they sell alcohol all day. It's just that at a certain point, at 10, let's say, let's say 10 o'clock. At 10 o'clock at night, the kitchens were closed. And they, they charged a cover charge and only sold alcohol.
Or less turned into a bulk.
Or less turned into a bar.
But can I say a word too?
I think Mr. Mullins has a couple of comments.
And the fact that, are they selling, are they getting half of their revenue from food? Not necessarily, how long were they serving food? Or because of being a restaurant, you would think that you would serve food until, until you're closed. But those are the type things that we've never looked at nor tried to enforce.
Right. But with this educational piece, even if they sell food until they close, they're saying they can't charge a cover charge.
Right, right. Because of being a restaurant.
Right.
So, I've, you know, we've got to look at, Jimmy, are there anything in Athens where a restaurant becomes a bar? where a restaurant becomes a bar? Is there, you know, I, I don't know how, you know, we kind of look to Athens a lot of times.
Right.
Other than being a bit hard.
Yeah, I think, and Hank had asked, has asked me to look at this, but I, I think what you have in Athens is Athens has about five different alcohol licenses. And they are categorized based on the activity that takes place at the, at that business. And I'm not certain of this, but in reading, when Athens was doing all of their, their own emergency orders, they would talk about class A to class F alcohol licenses. And I think that obviously that probably includes, of course, it includes all, you know, selling from, from the store, selling from the liquor store, selling at the grocery store. But I think, I think they have a graduation of a bar, of restaurant, selling alcohol, a restaurant that sells food and then becomes a bar. You know, I think they have multiple hybrids of that, and they price their, they price their alcohol licenses according. And that's how they, that's how they regulate.
I want to mention one thing, and that's before Mr. Mullins has his comments, because we just had a little note come up. And that was that we cannot, as we go forward and, and look at some variation of what we do now, we cannot lose sight of the reason that a lot of this was put in place, and it was to try to keep a diversification of businesses downtown so that we didn't just turn into a bar. And make sure that we, that we have businesses that cater to everybody throughout the day and even into the evening. And, and I think that was the real reason of creating a restaurant that sold alcohol. But Mr. Mullins, I think Hank put a.
Hey, only thing I want to say that, you know, we, we at council set a precedent about these restaurant and bar, because over the year, we allowed it to happen because if you, if everybody can recall back to the smoking, when we, we had the smoking ban, you know, as of ten o'clock, you couldn't smoke in a restaurant. But after, after that, you allowed people eighteen years old, then you couldn't, then you could smoke in them, in these red front bar situations. So then, until they changed the smoking law, so, so all this has, all this has been, been over, we've been allowing this over, over the years. We have set our own precedent to let this go on and on like this here. That's the only thing I didn't want to tell you, I want to remember about, even when it came down to the smoking, in the, in the red front.
You're right.
Do you believe this, you, or Ms. Walden, you all want to make a comment?
Well, I know that we have a ordinance that downtown, the bars, uh, they, we had, I haven't said it lately, but I will go and get it written, get off the phone. I think it was sixty forty, they had to sell sixty percent food, forty percent alcohol. I think that's what it was. Am I still in there or?
What did you just say, Ms. Wong?
Sixty forty.
I think there is an ordinance about the alcohol that where, if it's even late at night, that, that the city is supposed to check the receipts and things from them to where there is food sold with the alcohol.
Right.
So it's regardless, is, are you saying that regardless of the time, as long as food is being sold with the alcohol, is how it was presented?
Yes, that, that's the way, that's the way I remember it being, so I will go back and read it because we were supposed to check their receipts and things and make sure that, that that was taking place. And I don't think that was done as, as well.
Yeah, you're right, Ms. Walden, I mean, that, that is, that's how it was, that's how it's written, that's how the ordinance is written. Mr. Mullins is correct, and, Mr. Mullins is correct in that that is not how it's been enforced.
Well.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I was saying. That if it was being, if it was, it was presented that way, the ordinance is written that way, but we allowed them to charge a cover charge, and we chose not to stop it at that time, as, as long as the receipts reflect this sixty forty.
But that's what I, we were working on, I remember it being like that, so that, that's what I remember.
Now, do you, were you gonna, did you want to make a comment, Dorothy?
No, I was just trying to hear, every now and then a lot of static come in.
Right.
But I'm taking note.
So I guess my.
Jimmy, is that the way, is that the way, Jimmy, is that the way, or Mr. Jordan, is that the way you remember it too?
Yes, ma'am, that's the way, that is the way the statute reads.
I thought it was, yes.
Uh, it, you know, and, and it's, it has simply not, what we have, I mean, as we all know, what we have downtown are restaurants that turn into bars after about ten o'clock. And that is not in compliance with the statute, it definitely is not going to be in compliance with the governor's orders unless there is a, a change at ten o'clock in how the, the so-called restaurant that becomes a bar is configured. And where or not, I have not been involved in any cases where there's been an actual audit of receipts. But my, not my recommendation, but my suggestion to you is if you want to address that situation, is that you need to consider either a hybrid licensing, or you need to consider allowing bars to be licensed in the downtown, or anywhere for that matter. But right now, it is, again, going back to what Mr. Mullins said, which is exactly right, it has been allowed to operate in a way that is not in compliance with our cut. But it has been going on for a considerable period of time.
Now, the ones upon four forty-one, I think all of, all of them, with the exception of what, is it Applebee's closed down, other than that, those, that particular restaurant, it actually serves from the kitchen, so they stay open till late, or am I?
I haven't been there, I haven't been there a long time, but I, I think that is consistent with most of your major chains, Longhorns and so forth. I mean, they sell, they obviously have a bar, and they serve alcohol up until the time that, uh, up until the time that you're ready to close.
Because I know with, and I want to say Longhorn closes up at a certain time, I'm just living on this downtown, I know Applebee's is probably one of the ones that stay open past ten, but they are selling that food from the bar as well, I'm not sure about why, but I guess my question to, to the whole scenario is here, is this what's going on with COVID nineteen and the spread and trying to keep the spread down? Do we really want to, to allow that to continue to happen right now in the midst of all that's going on? Is, is that something you all are wanting to, to allow? If the businesses were in compliance, or I would say they were in compliance with whatever it was that was presented, was the code, education and implementation, and the businesses were doing well, because, you know, by all means, I was the first one to say that the businesses, downtown businesses did very well, they jumped out, they took care of their own, and we tried to do little things to help them. But in lieu of what's going on with the students coming back to school, and Mr. Griffith, he's aware of some of the incidents, we haven't actually made council aware of all the incidents, but I think this was supposed to be a proactive piece too, to make sure we'd be proactive for our college students coming back with this COVID nineteen. So, I mean, I guess we didn't ask the questions all night long, what if, what if, but right now, the situation is right here in our face, and they have already put it into place. And Mr. Smith, we're saying, you know, and I hear Mr. Mullins, it was already in place, what do we do from here? What do we want to do from here? Do we want to continue with operation, implementation on the educational piece? They've already been educated for three weeks now, and everybody would know what should be done and what should not be done in their establishments right now.
Well, Mayor, if you, if you don't mind me saying so, to those that, those establishments that we have allowed to charge cover charges, also have the governor's executive orders, and even as a bar, when they, as a bar, operating as a bar, they have been in compliance with what, what the executive order states. And then, and, and in charging a cover charge, they, they're still continuing to be in compliance, and they are aware that the students have returned, and they have to remain compliant because they want to stay in the good graces of our law enforcement as well. And law enforcement is constantly checking downtown to make sure that the businesses stay in compliance. The thing is that we have to decide what we're going to do with this educational piece as far as, as cover charges are concerned, and also because of the fact that if we just say, oh, well, we're, you know, just to, just to take care of COVID nineteen, that we're not going to allow them to charge in a cover charge, then you're in fact taking money away from people that are accustomed to earning money, and, and the economy's mad enough that we don't want to do that. You want, we want people to earn the money that they're accustomed to earning, at the same time that they understand that they have to be in compliance with the governor, all of the governor's executive orders and, and regulations, as well as the city regulations. So that's what we need to decide, where we're going to go with that, that we've allowed to take place all the time.
If, if, if this is a situation where we stay where we are, we stay where we've been for right now, and we try to make sure that there is compliance with the number of individuals, with the percentage of volume or whatever that you gauge it by with, with the number of people that are in a place gathered at one time, and we continue on with where we've been, and don't try to change everything to where maybe we should have been or whatever. And then, if we can get information to each of us so that we can make a decision about how we want to proceed from here, it's all about, to me, not so much this virus, but this virus at some point in time hopefully will be gone, and we'll be back, you know, to whatever the normal is on the other side of it. How are we going to approach this once all that's done? And that is, are we going to allow part-time bars, nighttime bars, bars, or just restaurants like we have, and are we going to enforce it? Are we going to make restaurants serve the whole time, just like some of these franchises do out on four forty-one? What, what is the situation going forward? Not necessarily what is it right now? Because to me, right now, it's all about making sure these places don't cram people in. I know they're wanting to real bad because they're hurting economically, there's no doubt about it. I'm a business person, and I am suffering bad, but you can only do what you can do and do it safely. What we don't want to see is that we allow reckless abandon, and the next thing you know, Georgia College shuts down and six thousand students go home, and then your business is going to exist no more. We won't have to worry about bars and restaurants in a downtown setting, or even out on four forty-one or whatever, because they're going to be gone. And it, it's all about how do we, how do we do it all and do it in a manner enough to where we can coexist and make enough of a living to make payments and do what we have to do for right now.
I agree, Mr. Chambers.
Everything you, go ahead, Ms. Chenholson, I'll go after you.
I just said I agree, Mr. Chambers, that's all.
Okay, and I was saying the same thing, we're going to have to put safety first. We can put safety first, and I believe everything will fall in place. If we don't put safety first, put education first, then we will be talking about shutting down again.
Agree with the, the perspectives expressed by my peers here in that safety is absolutely our number one priority, the safety of our students, our, our visitors, the safety of our citizens is going to be paramount and absolutely necessary to preserve the, the vibrant downtown scene, all of the economic activity that we enjoy in, in our business community here. I, I would like to make a point of inquiry here with Mr. Jordan. I, I've read through the, the codes as they pertain to the licensing process for restaurants and service of alcohol, and, and it is forty percent for anyone that serves Monday through Saturday, fifty percent for anyone that serves on Sundays as well. It must be at least fifty percent service of food, and forty percent service of food respectively. Where, what, what laws are we citing to, to assert that a restaurant may not charge a cover or check IDs at the door? I understand that Michael's law provides specific requirements for, for bars as defined by the state as seventy-five percent or more of their service being from alcohol sales, but where are we applying this reverse or inverse concept? And, and for that matter, where in the, in the code of ordinances is it referenced that food service must be done at all hours of operation in the restaurants?
Oh, I don't think it is. I, you, this is, this is the interplay of the governor's executive orders. And where we are historically in, in how we have handled the restaurant-bar situation. Again, there are much different requirements for a bar, okay, which the state law defines to a business that receives seventy-five percent or more of its revenue from sale of alcohol. Okay? That has a whole set of, of requirements that are actually much, I don't know if to say much, but they're, they're stricter than the restaurant requirements. Yes, got it. The, the restaurant requirements, a food establishment, as the definition uses, as in the governor's order is what he refers to. So what you're looking at is, if you're going to treat the food establishments as food establishments for the period of time that they're open, okay, all right, you're going to operate under one set of, of rules. And I don't know that there's any rule that requires a restaurant to check an ID at the door, okay?
Yes.
Uh, if though you're going to look at some hybrid arrangement where, at a certain point at night, restaurant becomes primarily a bar, okay, then are you at that point going to require the restaurant, who becomes a bar, to follow the guidelines set forth by the governor in his emergency order? And that's really, even though that restaurant, I'm assuming, like I said, we haven't audited in any of them, so we don't know.
so we don't know, but I'm assuming that restaurant would actually not meet that 75% rule other than the time that it's acting like a bar.
Yes, sir. And, and, and I think part of the, the question here becomes, are we looking at that percentage as a cumulative total of annual sales? Are we looking at it on an hourly basis? What is, what is the law in regards to interpreting that percentage of revenue?
Well, nobody has interpreted it as, as far as the governor's emergency order is concerned. Because we're dealing with a hybrid. We're dealing with restaurants that we all admittedly agree become bars, okay? That's neither authorized by, quite honestly, not authorized by our, our code. And it does not fall neatly into either one of the categories that the governor has delineated relative to his emergency order. So, you know, I don't have a, I don't have an answer for that. That's a matter of interpretation relative to how you want to apply the governor's emergency order to this hybrid situation that we have here in, in Millingdale. Because I think the governor's emergency orders have simply brought to the forefront this issue that, that we have had in, it's not an issue, but it's the way that restaurants have operated in downtown Millingdale for many, many years.
What's to say that a restaurant could not elect to charge a cover charge for any patron that came in the door?
Uh, I, I don't know that there's anything that would prevent a restaurant from charging a cover charge for coming in the door. I, I absolutely, I don't know of anything that, that would, would prevent that. I don't know that, I don't know that the cover charge is, you know, we didn't really have a discussion about the cover charge, but I don't know that the cover charge is, is a major component of anything other than making this restaurant become a bar after a certain time. When you start doing the cover charge, then obviously, you know, that's another indication of, of, you know, it's a bar, you know? Looks like a duck, walks like a duck, it's probably a duck.
And, and I would say, sir, that if, if it is our desire for that to be our interpretation, then it is incumbent upon us to pass an ordinance which reflects as much. Because if lacking a, lacking a, a plain English interpretation of what we see as a bar, I think we have to go by the, the plain interpretation of the law as written, which would be 75% of total sales, you know? So I would ask that if this is something that we want to look at, that we consider precise and explicit language to make sure that there is no confusion here. Because the local statute is actually even more strict than the state statute in regards to the percentage of sales. And so far, we have not had anyone that has been found to be in violation. If that is our fault for failing to do an audit, then that is, is our problem. And I, I don't think that it is appropriate at this time when these businesses are already strapped for cash and hurting during this pandemic to put especially restrictive policies in place without having something to legally back it up. I think that we put our businesses at risk and I think that we put the city at risk from a legal standpoint to arbitrarily begin interpretation of this. I want us to.
I don't, I don't think, I disagree. I don't think we put the city at risk, but I go back to what Mr. Mullins said. That's the way that it is always operated. It's up to you, it, it's up to the law enforcement to decide. It's up to you to decide if you want to change it. But as far as, you, you can't deny what we have. We've all acknowledged that. The question is, how do you make it fit with what is in the governor's emergency orders? I mean, that's really, that's really the crux of it. And like you said, I don't have a, you know, I don't know, there's a, you know, the governor's emergency order has gone from about 25 pages to about 49 pages. And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pretend to know what he means by whatever he's put in there. But I'm sure his, his best faith efforts on, on their part. So I think the, the real question is, is how you're going to enforce it? And what's the interpretation particularly relative to our law enforcement? What's expected? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
No, I just simply had a question. If we, you know, considering the fact that we have, like Steve said, we've done this for so many years and if we stay the same, is there anything that says that when they change over to what we've allowed them to do at night and charge a cover charge, that the rules change as well? And they go from the restaurant rules to the bar rules under the governor's executive order? And they have to operate in that manner? So, so like Walter was saying, the revenue from that point until closing becomes 75%?
I think, I think that is, yeah, I think that is a very common sense approach to the problem. And then hopefully at some point, you guys can have an opportunity to see what other folks are doing and reviewing it and so forth. But I think, I think spirit of the governor's emergency order and what it requires of our law enforcement would be, would be well supported by just what you described, Ms. Shinholster. I think absolutely.
And I, I, I don't know about the rest of them, but I would like to start right away working on something permanent so we won't run into, hopefully we won't ever have this situation again. But we just want to be clear on what we tell businesses when they want to open up in our downtown area.
Sure, I agree. We, we, we have that issue right now. We have a, we have a business that has been inquiring of our Main Street program that is looking at a, a combination that would make me believe at first blush that they are, are going to be more of a bar. But they actually, what they're proposing, and I, I don't want to, I may not be pretty to be able to disclose this, but what they're proposing actually may qualify them as a restaurant under the definition of food establishment. So, so yeah, I think, I think that's definitely something. I agree with you. I think that's something, you know, that we need to, to, to take a look at. And we definitely will take a look at it. But I, I, I think your proposal relative to how we handle the situation during, particularly during the governor's emergency order, is probably the rational, reasonable way to, to do it under the circumstances of what we have here in the city of Millingdale.
Mayor, I have a, I have a comment and a question. I want to get back to Mr. Reynolds' question because I think as part of his question, he also asked about the reasoning for the kitchen being open. And that was driven by the fact that in the governor's executive order, he defines a food service establishment as it's defined in Georgia Code 26-2-370. And that says a food service establishment means establishments for the preparation and serving of meals. So the kitchen is the preparation area for the servicing of the meals. So that's where the kitchen being open came along. But based on Ms. Shinholster's comment and, and potential for implementation, if, if after 10 o'clock, they're going to be treated as bars, then that would certainly mean the kitchen did not have to be open after 10 o'clock. But if they're going to be treated as bars, in my opinion, that means they have to fall under the governor's executive order requirements for bars. And, and, and that means that there can only be 50 people or 35% of the fire occupancy in there at any given time. So it's kind of a double edged sword here. If you're going to be a bar after 10 o'clock, it may limit the number of people you can have in there.
Oh, I think it does. No doubt about it.
And I, I think that's the only way to go. And that's what I'm trying to, to get around to. We've created a model that we have now.
Right.
Either it's by looking the other way or allowing things to happen or whatever. We already have that. Trying to change that in a situation that is a troubling economic time is going to be difficult at best. And I think if you're going to leave things the way they are, but then you have to get that safety part of it. And if you're going to get that safety part of it and you've got establishments that want to go under the bar type atmosphere, then they're going to have to be treated as a bar. I think everybody's in agreement on that. I don't think you're going to find, but you know, at the same time, we don't need to waste any time going forward and trying to determine how are we going to do this going forward? And how are we going to enforce it going forward? Not just say, okay, everything's hunky dory. You do what you want to do, as long as you're not messing up, it's okay.
I, I would propose then that if, if what we desire to do is to define the percentage of revenues to an hourly basis, that we create an amendment to the, the applicable ordinance, which would enforce as much. Until we can make that change, I, 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 I think that we, and again, there are greater legal minds than mine, but I would think that we would be teetering on possibility of being more restrictive on the governor's executive order. So if, if that's what we desire to do, I would ask that we, that we have an amendment drafted for the appropriate alcohol license provisions and that we make that change as soon as possible, if that is our desire.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that, Walter. But, but, but the mere fact of you going into a restaurant, just say we go on Applebee's and everybody at the bar drinking, they're not serving food. So calling what you're saying, they're not serving food. They have the capability of serving, but they're not serving because everybody's drinking. So they'll be in violation if you go on an hourly base. I think it should be an annual, huh?
Yeah, I don't know about that. I'm, I'm with you, Boo. I can't handle hourly. I think either, either you're going to be a restaurant and you're a restaurant for a certain amount of time and then you can turn over to a bar at a certain amount at a certain time of the evening or whatever. And we already have in place how long you can be open, how long you can serve, and so forth. And then you have, you have a payment for that right to be able to be a restaurant. And then you have a payment for that right to be able to be a bar at a certain time. I, I think being a restaurant to a bar is going to try to, you know, keep us from having just bars. And, you know, to me, that's, that's what I would espere to say.
Yeah, then we're going down a kind of sloopy, kind of, kind of narrow slope there because even we're talking about at nighttime, when they're talking about changing to a bar, if you just limit your menu down to one item, are you still considered a restaurant or what? You know, we got a lot of things we got to look at about this situation. You know, right now, most restaurants have cut their menu down. So are they still considered a restaurant? You know, so we got to look at everything.
And I think what you said, Mr. Griffith stated was that they couldn't serve food from behind the counter. He said that food had to be from the kitchen. Was that correct?
That is correct.
I guess, I guess, I guess my question would be if you, you have a full function restaurant at 11, at 11 o'clock at night, you just serve french fries from the back, are you still considered a restaurant?
Yeah, that's true. I guess so.
You just narrowed it down to limit the menu.
I'm going to tell you, during this pandemic and as long as the governor's emergency orders are in effect as they are, I think that we're going to be, just my opinion, my, we're going to be better served if we follow this model that Ms. Shinholster has suggested. And that is when the, when the kitchen shuts down, okay? Or at a particular time, which I'm not sure, I think it's typically 10 o'clock, that these establishments take on the characteristics of a bar and they have to comply with the governor's order relative to, to bars. And you can look at it as from 10 o'clock on, they're doing basically no food and they're 100% alcohol. But the objective of the, of the governor's emergency orders is to protect all of us from COVID-19. And so the circumstances on the ground dictate that when it's a restaurant, it gets treated under the governor's order as a restaurant. When it becomes more like a bar, then it is treated like a bar. And that our law enforcement is charged with enforcing, wherever that turnover takes place, is in charge with enforcing the governor's emergency orders. And we'll leave the interpretation to, you know, to, if, hopefully this doesn't happen, but if somebody doesn't want to comply with that, then we'll leave that interpretation, they'll be cited, we'll leave that interpretation to our, to our municipal court. But it just seems like that's the best way to protect the public in, in this situation. And it, and it, it dovetails into what our current situation is. That our restaurants at some point during the night become more like bars than restaurants.
And do you want, there's something where when we knew that they were going to come bars at 10 o'clock, that we, that we made them be closed by 2 o'clock?
I think 2 o'clock is their, isn't that their closing time?
Yes, yes. But I, I, I'm almost positive it is. It's not all right or anything. It's 10 o'clock, I think, until 2.
Now, Athens just moved theirs to 11:30 as a result of a lawsuit that was settled with an 11:30 cutoff time. But yeah, Ms. Wallen, that's, it's 2 o'clock here.
So we view that some of them were bars downtown and then we even had to enforce them at one time, closing at 2 o'clock.
Right. We, we've had to do that too. And then I think as we work through this pandemic, if, we'll gather some information and if you guys are interested in considering some changes to our alcohol licensing, then you can look at them at that time.
That would be, that would probably be a good thing to do. But, you know, at, at one time, this was years and years ago, when the bar thing started catching on, just about everybody was wanting to turn into a bar. And that's why we had to put food and stuff in there because we didn't want all downtown to be nothing but bars.
I, I think that is a correct history of that.
Because people send their kids here and they pay money for their kids to come to college to get an education, not to learn to go to bars.
Well, you know, I was going to ask the question, even from Thursday on, don't we have a lot of family frequent, frequenting our restaurants downtown? I feel certain, up until at least 10, I'm sure. Because I've been out on the first Friday.
Sure.
And they're still, get the restaurants eating. So how smooth of a transition does that look like? To be able to transition it quick, to go from 10 o'clock, I'm no longer serving and every underage person is out of that particular venue? I think that was some of the problem, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Griffith, is that a parent wanted to know why their, their young underage child was in one of the restaurants. Is that correct?
That's correct. According to Chief Swiker, that was, he gets calls like that periodically.
So, you know, overall, as Mr. Jordan said, it was a great opportunity, you know? And I do understand what everybody is saying, but you know, just can't come at the business. businesses and, and that's their livelihood at nighttime is when they sell the most alcohol at a certain time. But at the same time, Mr. Steve, I heard you say you're a very prudent, uh, business owner. And I think even you had to kind of shift your days and timing around a little bit, uh, to where it pinches everybody that, that have the right to open up for whatever establishment they have. To me, I, I, I mean, you all, this is your vote as always, but you know, I think a lot of the things we need to take into consideration that Mr. Jordan has already stated in reference to that. And you know, even though we're not trying to ding them too bad, because one thing for sure, we'll try to help them before we hurt them, is, uh, you just figure out another way for who, and when you say cover charge, what do you mean, cover charge? What, are they actually going outside or at a certain time, they, at the door and they're saying, okay, you gotta pay this cover charge and get something, stamp your hands and this is being my day out and I'm...
Right. You pay to get in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would think, you know, that would hurt somebody on the top end to say, uh, pay to get in when you're in the family establishment before you go to selling all the alcohol. And, um, I don't know, is, you, you also...
I mean, I think you may be talking about two different situations too, though, because there, there are certain, uh, restaurants that want that family type atmosphere. They're not gonna be the ones that are gonna be staying up for 1 and 2 o'clock in the morning.
Well, by all means, by all means, this, this...
They're, they're not gonna have anybody left at 10 o'clock. You know, every, everybody's gonna be, um, come to that place for what they wanted and, and they're, they're on their way home.
So how do our underage children, uh, getting out behind in, in, uh, in the bars if nobody... That's my question.
As far as enforcement goes, that's something that needs to be really hammered. And I don't care what kinda economic time we're in. If that's being allowed and kids are, and I'm getting with, with licenses that they have confiscated from older individuals and you know, all this has been going on since, uh, since they have their licenses, I guess, uh, you know...
It's not authorized, Dave.
But you know, it's, it's a situation that, uh, that is something beyond the safety of this pandemic. And that's something that needs to be ongoing and that is safety for our kids. Those kids have no right being down there. The parents have no right in allowing those kids to be out at that time of night. And that's my personal feeling about it. Mine didn't. And you know...
Well...
That's something...
Uh, Mr. Chalmers.
Let's go after that.
Yeah, Mr. Chalmers, you and I must be on the same page today because in, in, in thinking about that, yeah, I mean, I have a 14-year-old grandson and somebody should know where he is about 10 o'clock at night. So I wouldn't be calling anybody, asking, why is he in a restaurant by himself and you're at home? You should know where your child is. So that's a whole different conversation. Yeah, I, you know, I'm sure that, you know, if you're not keeping up with your child, then your child, you know, sometimes those things happen and it might've been just an oversight and you're gonna have things, like you said, you're gonna have things like that from time to time where somebody underage gets an ID and they slip in somewhere. But the thing is that we, we, you know, that's why our law enforcement will, you know, seek out that person and say, look here, you need to get out of here or randomly check IDs and, and make sure that those, those people that have IDs are the age that they, that they say they are. But there's nothing that we can do to prevent that. So we don't base what we do completely around that one situation or those couple of situations. We don't hurt, hurt restaurants and places downtown simply because we have one or two of those situations and then we tell them, okay, so you can't close up and charge a cover charge because we had this to happen two or three months ago.
So it, it sounds like to me, everybody's just saying, go with what you've been doing. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, we're saying go with what we've been doing and enforce the governor's executive orders accordingly.
Right.
Until, until we can fix it.
That's what I'm asking, Mr. Nisa, is everybody on the same wavelength?
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I can hear, I hear a lot of...
So is, is enforcing... So is enforcing the governor's order after 10 o'clock mean we are enforcing the requirements of a bar?
Correct. Correct.
Hey, wait a minute, I think, I think we got to...
That's what that establishment becomes.
Well, well, basically in, in the past history, they stopped serving food at 10, they basically turned in bars at 11 and usually have their hour great spirit in there. So I think we, I think it should go from 11.
I think if part of, I think if part of this revolves around, I think if part of this revolves around charging cover charge, then they go under bar regulations when they start charging the cover charge.
Right.
This is not being mistaken, okay?
That, that normally is coinciding with a kitchen shutting down. You know, one, one thing that you have to think about is that, uh, the economic impact of trying to keep a kitchen open and having the staff there and, and that, all that overhead and, and that's something that I know a lot of these, um, you know, restaurants, and then you don't have demand for it. But that's, you know, that's something that we've got to decide going forward. How are we gonna address that particular situation? We, we know what we got now, let's go with what we got now and let's make sure they're safe.
Yeah, I don't think we should put a timeframe on it. I think that we just need to say like whoever, whoever it was that said at that time that they started charging a cover charge.
Say that again, Mr. Nisa, I think you kind of got chopped over a little bit. Almighty?
I said that, um, I, I, I think it was Mr. Jordan that said that, um, we need to, um, they, they turn into a bar at the time that we, they start charging a cover charge.
I mean, that's, that's, that's reasonable and if, I don't know if they all call charge a cover charge or, or not, but I think that it becomes at whatever time that, uh, the food stops being served and either cover charge or when the food stops being served, they become a bar and they have to adhere to the governor's, uh, emergency orders relative to, to bars. Uh, and then hopefully, Mr. Griffin and the police department will educate these establishments to what's expected of them. They need to know what's gonna be, what's gonna be expected of them. So I, I agree, Mr. Shinholster, I think that's the way it ought to be done.
All right, just simply because obviously the, the police department, under my direction, they're gonna be charged with, with education and implementation of this process. I've gotta think through all the different scenarios. What happens if you have an establishment that the kitchen stays open until 11 and they don't charge a cover charge? Are they controlled by bar requirements after 11 o'clock? Uh, if their, if their kitchen stays open until 2? Are they, are they a restaurant until 2 and never fall under the bar requirements?
But to me, if they serve food until they close, then they're a restaurant.
Food from the kitchen, correct?
If they stop serving food and they stay open and a bar and they serve alcohol, then they're a bar. Pretty simple.
Food from the kitchen.
And I think the other aspect of that is if they're checking IDs at the door at a certain time, they've become a bar.
Okay. All right. Good, good point.
And I don't, I don't think there's much dispute about that, which we want them checking IDs, uh...
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I think that triggers their bar status at that point, I would, I would.
Yeah, they can continue to serve if they want to, but unlike Mr. Jordan, if they're checking IDs, they, they have become a bar. They can serve whatever they wanna serve from their kitchen.
Yeah, that's probably the correct way to put it.
Number of different perspectives and interpretations that are being thrown around right now is exactly why I, I would again urge us to codify what the definition of a bar is. And until we do so, I think we have to lean on our previous interpretations. I'm not trying to be contrarian here, I just think that, that we should be consistent with this. And that we should have something we can lean to and back up.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with you that we're gonna lean on our previous interpretations of, of, of when they become a bar or how they become a bar. Um, I mean, what, what other definition do you need to define a bar?
Well, we're, we're, we're suddenly changing the interpretation about total sales versus hourly sales. And that's a pretty radical shift without redefining as much.
I think we're trying to, the only thing I would say, Council Reynolds, is I think what we're, the, the focus right now is to address the issue of the pandemic.
Yeah.
It's not to, it's not to come up with a solution to what has been an ongoing practice within the city of Village, that's how I would, that's how I see it. How are we going to address the issues of the pandemic and try our best to comply with the governor's?
Fine.
I, I certainly agree and I, I think one, one alternative way to address this and accomplish that goal would be to bring in these stakeholders and have a very frank discussion with them. Let's, let's talk with the restaurateurs, let's talk with these, with these business owners and try to establish ground rules that we all agree to.
I mean, Mr. Griffin and the police department, that's been part of their, that's the educational component of what they are doing. It is gonna change a little bit based on what I hear, uh, Council saying, uh, and so there's gonna have to be a little re-education, I guess. But, uh, uh, I think, I think that the folks that own these establishments downtown, if they know what the city is expecting, you, I'd like to think you're gonna get compliance. And I think that's, you, you know, we're, we're all charting, uh, you know, this is uncharted territory for, for all of us in many ways. And I think that if we simply apply logic to the situation relative to when it is a restaurant and when it becomes a bar for purposes of the governor's emergency orders and during this pandemic, that we're going to be, we're gonna be, we're gonna be on good legal footing, okay? As best as anybody can be, uh, and then we're going to, to address the long-term implications if you also choose. You may leave it just like it is, but we're gonna address long-term implications at a, at a date in the future. I mean, I think from a legal standpoint, that is our best approach when you take all of this and look at it as to how it has operated, what, what our own statute requires.
So one thing that, if I'm, if I may, right quick, Mayor, one thing, Walter, that, uh, that has become a problem and it's a persistent problem, uh, even well before all this came about, and that is, are we all being treated the same way? And, uh, the establishments downtown, one thinks another's getting away with something or doing something different or whatever. And that's, uh, to me, sometimes, uh, there's a, a lot of truth to it, sometimes it's childishness. But, uh, I, I think that's the reason of trying to figure out exactly how do you determine when somebody is gonna be kind of within the realm of a bar or whatever, if you wanna make sure that you're trying through all this, trying to create the safest environment, is that you're treating everybody the same way at the same time? And, you know, that's, that's what, I, I think that's what our city manager's trying to do, is get a good grasp on making sure everybody, all the establishments are treated fairly.
And, and I, I certainly agree with, with again, the proactive safety measures that are being taken here, but I think that there are farther reaching legal implications here. Uh, an excellent question to point out here is if we are considering them to be a bar, at that point, does Michael's Law then apply? Would, would that mean that all the service staff need to go to 21 and up? Would that mean that, uh, they can, they can still allow someone under 21 into the establishment if they charge a cover charge and have live music performances going on? There are just, there, there are further legal implications that, 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 that apply here, I think, if that's what we're going to go on.
Now, what I think here...
One of y'all speak.
Right.
What, what I was gonna say was, Walter, when they become a bar, all the rules for a bar apply. All the staff have to be 21 and over. Everybody that comes in there has to be 21 and over and they are a bar. Now, that's not to say every restaurant downtown has to become a bar at that particular time at night, but those that do, when they start charging that cover charge, all of the bar rules apply from the governor's executive order down to the state laws that, that govern a bar. That's employees, that's everybody that's in the establishment, all of the above. I don't, I don't understand why that's difficult.
What, what I'm concerned about is that, that we're trying to go beyond what we have. We're, we're not there. We're not there yet. So, you know, everything is the way that it is. If you're operating the way you're operating now, then continue to operate that way. But know that if you're selling alcohol and you're charging a cover charge and checking IDs, then you're gonna be treated as a bar as far as the safety situation is concerned. Everything else is down...
Right.
Now we start to change things. We've got to come up with a determination of how we're gonna change the ordinance. That can't be done overnight. I'm not gonna do it overnight. We can't do it fast enough.
Can't do it overnight. We, you would say...
That's what's going on right now.
I, I agree with you all on those points and I think that we could accomplish this by, again, speaking to the stakeholders, getting buy-in from them. Change is more difficult when it's done to us than when it is done through us. Yeah.
Okay, well, I think we...
Uh, Mayor, I'm sorry. I, I noticed that you said that Rocky was on, that, that, that's one of the stakeholders, Rocky, are you listening?
No, I...
Like he's muted.
He is.
Oh. Okay, so I, I mean, I didn't know, know if Walter wanted to hear from one of the stakeholders. I think he's just, you know, he's just listening, but...
Can you mute it? Can you unmute it?
Well, my, my concern with hearing from Rocky is that all the other stakeholders were not invited to be here tonight. That, he is unmuted, he is unmuted now, but my concern, and it's nothing against Rocky, my concern is that all the other stakeholders were not invited to be here tonight to share their opinion and, and, and Rocky is. So I would, I would be concerned about what that might look like.
I agree.
Okay, that's a point, point taken.
And again, I think everybody, again, I understand where Mr. Reynolds is coming from, from the total legalities of this situation. What the purpose of, of this discussion as far as what we're going to do going forward has strictly to, is, is about the safety. Okay? Once they perform as a bar, then we're gonna expect them to adhere to the governor's criteria for the bar. When they're a restaurant, we're gonna expect them to adhere to the governor's criteria as a, as a restaurant. And that all has to do with placement of tables, social distancing and all of those issues that are safety oriented. The, the minutia of these changes that may, uh, relative to, you know, uh, how we're going to go forward, uh, that's for you guys to, to discuss and, and debate at probably another time, once we get... to discuss and debate at probably another time, once we gather some information for you and you look at it. You may decide not to do anything. But that's not the point of what's going on right now, as, as, as Mr. Griffith and myself and the police chief and Major Davis see it. It's how we go about enforcing the safety requirements that we are, that appear to be what we are being mandated to, to do. So, I don't want to get, obviously, I'm not the policy man. I don't want to get too far afield, but the focus of this is compliance with what has been presented to us as, as safety and what's going to keep, I think Mr. Chambers said, and Mr. Shinos should mention too, what's going to keep these students here and not have a shutdown for, you know, we're going to have a shutdown again, and we're going to have a problem, as we're already seeing in other, in other university and college towns.
I agree. And I think it should all be done within the bounds of the law.
Right. And that's, and I assure you, that is, that is what I'm recommending. Because I think it's the way that we have operated these downtown establishments. I think we have a hybrid situation in that we meet the governor's requirements, both on the restaurant end and on the bar end, at some point during the night. I guess it's this, it's, you know, there's plenty of interpretation of the governor's emergency orders. And that is, that is my interpretation of how we comply with the hybrid situation that we have here in the city of Millersville.
I've stated my position, and I will labor it no further. I'll leave it to, I'll leave it to the majority on this.
I think you're, you're spot on, Jimmy.
Mm-hmm. I think Jimmy's right, too.
I agree.
Jimmy, Jimmy may not be right. I want to make that clear. I just think logically, that is the point.
I think that you are, because that makes, I mean, that's just common sense. If you're a restaurant up until 10 o'clock, then you are a restaurant. If you change over to a bar or you start checking IDs for people to come in, or you start charging a cover charge, you are a bar. And you should comply with whatever the rules are for a bar.
That's right.
And that's pretty simple. They all know what time they've been changing over. I mean, and they know, they, they all know that. We don't, we may not, but they do.
Okay.
And, and the college kids knows what time to go. But they're going to have to do it safely and abide by whatever the law is for the bar. Then that's just what they're going to have to do.
That's right. That's right. So, I think we all, we all have a consensus, consensus on that particular piece now, right? We all, Mr. Griffith, is there anything you need to ask as far as your directions or how you're going to give it out?
Yes, ma'am. Myself and Mr. Jordan will be talking in the morning to put this down in writing. And once it's in writing, it will be put on city letterhead. And I want all council members and the mayor to sign off on it, because that's what will be distributed to the food service establishments and the city limits.
Yeah, and sign off on it means get some input from you guys. We're not going to, you're not actually going to sign the, whatever, we're not able to do that. But, yeah, once-
This will be, this will be communicated as a directive of mayor and council, not as someone who made policy.
Right.
Mr. Griffith, the only thing that I would ask you then, if that's the case, do not send it to my Millersville City Council email so I can have access to it during the day. Send it to my personal email account, and I can review it during the day. If not, it'll be later on that night before I send it.
I don't anticipate having this in place and being implemented before about next Monday, quite frankly.
Okay, that's fine. But as long as you send it out during the day and-
So, it's going to be the Wild West downtown this Thursday night, so.
No, they still have to abide by the governor's rules. That's an executive order.
Yeah, right.
There's nothing that we can do about that.
Exactly.
They still have to enforce the governor's executive order, because that'll affect everything.
Okay, so, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Griffith, we want to start shooting music with Ellen, with Ron.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's, we know what we need today.
Okay. The other thing, as you all know, that Governor Kemp did a new EO emergency order on Saturday night, and that was giving city and counties the ability to mandate mask wearing. I think everybody knows my input on this from day one. You all wanted us to do it. But there again, it has to come directly from you guys as to whether or not we will mandate the mask wearing on public, in public areas. And that will be everywhere within our city limit, in a public place, in a right-of-way, sidewalks. Am I right, Mr. Jordan? In some other areas, parks?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if you, any of you have had an opportunity to look at the amended draft of the ordinance relative to mandating masks. Hank has taken what we originally did and has done a really good job of making sure that it is now in compliance with the governor's latest executive order. And I have reviewed it, he asked me to review it, I've reviewed it, and it definitely complies with the governor's order as to what cities and local governments can do if you choose to mandate masks. I think the biggest component of that is, you know, the governor put in that order that you, the city cannot compel a business to require masks if that business chooses not to. And so, there is a provision in there that basically puts law enforcement on notice. There has to be some signage posted that puts law enforcement on notice that this business is not going to, this business is not requiring its patrons or customers to wear a mask. And if that is properly posted, then there is no enforcement within that business. It still allows us to enforce a mask mandate for the city areas and in those businesses that want a mask mandate enforced. And of course, it can only be, and Hank, you might want to address this, but it can only be enforced in communities where there is a certain presence of, percentage presence of COVID-19, which I understand we, we actually exceed that at this point.
That is correct. There is a, there is a threshold. And the county where the mask ordinance is in place has to meet the threshold. And what the threshold is, is that over the previous 14 days, there, you had to have had either equal or greater than 100 cases per 100,000 people. So, we obviously easily meet that threshold and most likely will for, for some time. Now, the thing that, that I would just bring up, that that, that means is, if at any point in time we don't meet that threshold, then the mask ordinance cannot be enforced. So, it's going to be, you know, there may be days when we can't enforce it because we didn't meet that threshold on that particular day. But I don't think that's going to be a major issue for our community early on.
And I think I had the pleasure of getting an email, not an email, an email from one of our youngest, youngest constituents that has voiced their opinion to me, a 15 years old, how we need to mandate the mask wearing. There again, I have shared with everyone what we're talking about tonight. I don't know where you all are. Are we still there? I would think that we would still be there as far as mandating the mask wearing, or as I shared with Chris, face covering, simply because of so much, the virus hadn't been, hadn't been brought to a slowing point in time, as we would have loved to have seen it within a wonderful city. And it's going to be hard, probably with people back and forth, in and out, working. But at least we know we are trying to serve our constituents that are, every day, probably referring to us as to when are we going to adopt the mask wearing. And as I have shared with everyone, of course, they know that prior to the governor's executive order this weekend, we just didn't have, are they going to stand on it at that particular point in time. Now that he has given us that authority, and then it's going to fall on us as a council as to what we do. It's good to know some of our young people are engaging in politics at such a young age. And then very well-written email, if I must say so, he did all his site citing, where he did his, where you're supposed to make sure you put your reference of where you cite itself from. He did all of that. And I shared that with Mr. Griffin today. But I think that even down to some of our, well, not going to say Samba, the healthcare workers, the paramedics, you know, so many people that want to see this. So, we have this under our COVID-19, whether or not we're going to implement that. And as to what is the starting date for this discussion.
When was this handed out? Has it been sent to us? Is that-
Yes, it's been sent to you, because it, it took some time to, to take Jimmy's original draft and, and making sure that it met the necessary requirements of the newest executive order. And, and me getting that done and getting it back to him. And so, it is, it is in your email box waiting on you. And we obviously do not have anything on the agenda tonight in terms of passing an ordinance. That doesn't mean it can't be, the agenda can't be amended by y'all. But it's there for y'all to, to review and, and take up anytime you want to, whether you want to have a call meeting to do it, whether you want to do it at your regular meeting next Tuesday night. We deliberately held off on sending out the agenda today to see if anything came out of this meeting that we might need to add to the agenda for the meeting for the 25th, so.
And Mr. Jordan, you said-
Why don't we take the time to read?
Yes, ma'am. We can, we can discuss it. It's under, it's under the COVID-
19.
Agenda. But I don't think that we anticipated that you would, would adopt it tonight, because you just got it earlier today. You know, sometimes after I get back with my law clerk, he, you know, he makes other changes to things and I have to look at it. But, you know, I tell you, he's a, he's a good law clerk. He, he, he is, he makes it easy.
Well, why don't we wait and decide that on Tuesday night at our, at our council meeting? We can, if we decide to mandate it, then we can, can mandate it Tuesday night in our regular meeting.
Yeah, I need to look at it, because we've got businesses now that are posting that they require a mask. And I see people going in right and left without a mask. The only thing that I see any of these businesses doing is nothing. They, these people get stares from everybody wearing masks. But other than that, you know, I think businesses are, they want to do the right thing, or they want to make everybody safe. But at the same time, they're hesitant about creating a situation of somebody, you know, going, blowing their top about being made to act or be a certain way. And, you know, that's unfortunate for all of us that want to be safe, but it's also reality. So, I want to be able to look at this thing and, and understand not only how it's going to impact everybody else, but also how it's going to impact what I have, my business. And-
Well, like I said, Steve, you'll, you'll see in there that pursuant to the governor's order, any business that does not want masks to be enforced, simply post that they're not enforcing it. And law enforcement has no jurisdiction in which to enforce it against a business owners.
Okay, they don't have a recourse.
That was private, any private, property business.
Right.
Mandate that. But, you know, basically, I guess the reason why I'm bringing it up tonight is that, you know, whether we're going to, what is it, our city mandated buildings, our right-of-ways, parkways, whatever it was that Mr. Griffith sent them out, the second sit today. And that was the reason why I brought it up tonight as a part of the COVID-19 related items that we're talking about.
And there is, there, Jimmy, straighten me out if I'm not right here. But we could actually do an ordinance just to require face masks in city facilities that would not necessarily be an ordinance required to do, to mandate face masks citywide. Isn't that correct, Jimmy?
That, that's correct.
Well, let me say something with this here. You know, for the mask, you know, we talking about passing something that we really can't hardly enforce, because the business is going to have the opportunity to, you know, let people come in without a mask. I'd rather, I'd rather see something that we, you know, like we recommend or something, you know, not just mandate. And personally, we talking about outside this building, we wish for to be safer when you're outside in the environment. And we're going to make, make a person wear a mask, but go inside of a restaurant or somewhere, they won't have to wear it. And to me, that doesn't make sense, you know? Where you most likely are in the park, you're sitting in the park by yourself, riding in your car, based on what I'm hearing by just here, going down on the city street, that police can stop you, because you don't have a mask on. And that, that would be the safest environment.
Yeah, that's, Mr. Reynolds, that's not exactly what that proposed ordinance says. Obviously, if you're riding in your car, you don't have to wear a mask. If you can distance yourself, you're going to be alleviated from the mask requirement. But I just think, you know, we put it out there because it was considered once before. I just think you guys need to review it.
Right.
And, and decide if it's something that, that you're interested in, in adopting. So, first of all, we had no intention of anybody considering or voting on it tonight. Just to put it out there for you, let you read it, ask any questions you have, and then decide if, if that's something that you, that you want today. It may not be.
If it gives everyone else any feeling of security, as much as I had questions and concerns about, as part of the previous discussion, I have no qualms with, with this particular ordinance. It fits in line with the governor's executive order. It allows businesses to opt out if they so choose. It provides certain exemptions for individuals who have difficulty putting on masks and others. It really is about as, as, as non-inhibiting to private individual rights as it can possibly be, while also maintaining a certain degree of safety for everyone. It basically allows a private business to have us help them enforce a mask mandate, but at the same time, does not require as much. If your business does not want it, then you post a sign and say, we don't enforce it, and no one's going to bother you. It doesn't require it in private homes or private- It doesn't require it in private homes or private, private areas where you're only in, in cohabitating with other individuals that you live with. It's, it's, it's a pretty well-written ordinance, I have to say. I, I would fully support it and I would be comfortable with passing it this evening if there is a majority that would, that would be so inclined.
I heard from Mr. Steve and Mr. Walden, is anybody else want to chime in?
I do. You know, we was talking earlier about some businesses not wanting to have masks, but I have noticed those businesses who asked for you to wear masks provide masks at the doors. So in case you forget, because people want the business, so they provide a box of masks there at the door. So if this ordinance is passed, which I know is passed, is there any way we can have like a box of masks at the hall in case people forget they can put their mask on and do business?
It's actually required as part of the ordinance that we provide a mask to anyone that does not have one. And I would think that would especially apply within city facilities. Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right. Absolutely.
And they are actually, they are actually available in city facilities now, Dr. Lee.
Right. We didn't hear from Ms. Shinhooster and we didn't hear from Mr. Mullins.
What?
Ms. Shinhooster. But you, you just said, what did you just say in reference to that? You were saying something about what difference did it make? So what's your vote?
We're not voting on it. Give it time to look it over, because I haven't looked over it, huh?
Okay, all right. Ms. Shinhooster.
Yes, ma'am. I, I, I read it. I don't have a problem with it. I, I see it as a way to help those businesses that want to enforce or want to have people to wear masks while they're conducting business with them. It's a way for us to help them enforce that particular, their particular desire as, as well as, you know, us helping to prevent the threat of COVID. I heard what Mr. Mullins said about, you know, being outside is one of the safest places to be in and, and I understand that there are from time to time, you just want to come out of it if you're in it as, in one as much as I am from time I get out my car in the morning till I, till I get back in it at five o'clock, you do get tired of them. But at the same time, for safety, it's, it's a necessary thing to do and help, to help prevent the spread of this disease or the continual spread of it. I think it's something that we're going to have to just bite that bullet and, and move forward with it. So I don't have a problem with it.
I, I will, I will say as y'all are thinking through this and, and, you know, I, I don't, the, the mayor and I have had long discussions about it and I think, I think wearing a mask is certainly beneficial. That's the whole reason I mandated it in the city facilities by employees when I did. But the other thing too, that I would just remind y'all is from an enforcement standpoint with businesses, everybody's gonna have to be patient because we only have a certain number of law enforcement folks on the road and they have a lot of things going on, obviously. So, but we, we, we could, if it gets to the point where we're using the special detail on the restaurant, or using overtime folks on the, the restaurant detail, we could also use overtime folks on this and we would be able to pay for them with CARES Act money. So we have that potential.
And so what I'm hearing is I had three in favor of let me read and three in favor of going ahead with that tonight. Is that what I heard? Make sure.
I'm trying to read it right now. I'm trying to.
Yeah, I don't want to. If, if they want to wait till Tuesday and let, I mean, give them an opportunity to read it, I'm not gonna change my mind between now and Tuesday.
I guess that's where I'm at, Mr. Nice, because it really wasn't too much more to be said or not seen than from the first, what was it, maybe one or two things which we did it. Mr. Hank?
No, ma'am. There were, there were a fair number of changes in it. Probably, probably more than there needed to be after Mr. George, the clerk, got a hold of it, but they, they, there was some pretty significant changes based on the governor's latest executive order.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely, it had to be significantly modified just to be in compliance with what the governor had allowed cities, local governments to, to, to do. So it's, it's, it's got several differences.
Well, Mr. Jordan, you know, you all know where I'm at with that and I'm gonna say for those that need to read it, read it, but it's gonna come down to the same table next week and it's gonna follow my lap. Then you might as well go on with it tonight unless you go, you know, get it changed up. And I know in all fairness, you need to.
Mayor, you're, you're taking my word to read this thing because we just received it this afternoon as.
If you let me finish, Mr. Nice, I was just about to say, I know somebody, I won't read it over it tonight. I guess I wouldn't have a problem with it, you know, I'm not that kind of person. So if you, but I'm just saying if it fill in my lap tonight, I swear, but if it's gonna be the same thing, like you said, you don't think you're gonna have no problem, but go ahead and read it and have it.
Man, man, I don't think, I think you assuming the way we're gonna vote. You know, I'll just, I'll just point out some decent, some, some point about it. You know, that's the only thing I was saying. You know, like I said, only thing, I didn't want an opportunity to look over it, that's all it was. It just came up tonight.
That's fine. I have no problem with that. And I learned three years ago, not to a son. So that's fine. If y'all want to take it and have it, then bring it back for next Tuesday night meeting. Are there anything, any other items that we need to discuss that you all can think about while we're talking? We've had such a good meeting tonight that you all want to put on the table?
I hate to stretch things out, Mayor, but I would like some guidance regarding dealing with what I'm calling house parties. Large, large groups partying at, at residential areas. Obviously, we've got some ordinances in place even without the governor's executive order that we can deal with in terms of, of noise ordinances and, and unruly conduct and those kinds of things. But I, I'll just ask a specific question. If, if we ultimately go back to an education and enforcement detail based on the potential to warn and cite people in restaurants or bars, whichever one they are, based on what they're doing for failure to social distance and failure to refrain from gathering, is that, is that something that the council has an appetite to do at these residential parties after obviously numerous warnings in order for, to try to, try to break those up?
Can I have a question, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't the governor's executive order cover gatherings as well?
It, it, it does. And that was my, that was my question. If, if we're citing those in restaurants, what is council's appetite to also cite people for those same situations everywhere else?
Yeah. My opinion is the governor's executive orders apply to all of us in all situations. I mean, it, it, you know, it exempts churches from assembling, so why we, we allow parties to assemble?
That's right.
And, and, you know, and, and that way, when, you know, when, when, when you can't have a religious gathering or even a family gathering or even a funeral gathering with a large group of people, then why are we allowing parties to take place with a large group of people because the same executive order applies to all of them?
Well, as I stated earlier, in reference to Mr. Griffin's remark this thing, we have got a lot of emails with the pictures and people being, I guess, Facebooked or whatever, camera booked, but however you want to put it. And, you know, I had an opportunity to observe with my own eyes in reference to some complaints about that. So that's, that's the piece I'm saying where we're tying into where we were going with that implementation and educational pieces was helping us on down the road because prior to first day of class, I don't know what it's like this week, and all the students were getting back on campus, it was horrendous to see some of that stuff come across. And when I tell you what I saw with my own eyes was so shocking and it was nothing nobody told me, but it's, it's what I observed and that was ridiculous.
Well, those are the situations colleges and universities across the country I happen to deal with is that when the students came back, they started partying and gathering and, and doing all sorts of things at, at places that were off campus, which is what we're experiencing here. So, you know, to me, the enforcement is saying the same. If you're enforcing the governor's executive orders, then you already have your marching orders to do the same because we know the result. As a result, some of the colleges have had to shut down and go back to virtual learning because of this type of behavior and we really don't want that to happen. So we're going to try to eliminate it before it comes to that. So we won't have to be faced with that here in Millersville.
Well, I think we're already kind of faced with it somewhat to a certain degree. And I don't know if you all are reading, I think, Mr. Griffin, you're still sending everybody the health updates every week, right?
That's correct.
So, you know, even with the call that Mr. Griffin and I were on today, just listening on GMA's weekly call, you know, we kind of both looked at each other and said, well, my goodness, that's our everyday life. It's the one piece that they suggested. But there again, how would that work in your house also, what it looks like? Anything else? Anybody else would like to discuss at this time before we adjourn or get a motion to adjourn?
I would just concur with the previous sentiments expressed about enforcing the gathering rules as defined by the governor's executive order where it extends and spills over beyond the university's campuses and beyond their bounds and control. I believe that would be incumbent upon us to enforce that locally with our own resources. So if there are large gatherings that are found to be in violation, I, I would be in favor of those being addressed by local law enforcement through the city.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
Well, I'm gonna say this, and that is that you can't fix students.
Okay, Mrs. Steve.
So these people need to realize that they just cannot outrun this thing. They can't outyoung it, they can't outdo it, they can't, and we need to lay the law down and make sure that they understand that if they don't comply, they're gonna be sent home, but they're not gonna be happy about it because mom and dad are not gonna be happy the reason they got sent home. Not because they got the virus, but because they were not acting like young adults. So I don't care if they're in a bar, at a house, or out in a big field. If there are too many of them, they need to be cited.
Just a point of information, I know GCSU has been providing tracking for student cases on campus. Last week it was 12, as of yesterday it was 52, as of today we're now at 75. There were 21 new cases reported on campus today. So this is something that we, we definitely need to be enforcing as quickly as possible.
And, and according, according to an AJC article I sent you all a link to today, there were students quoted as saying they were not going to get tested because they didn't want to have to be sent home.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. I'm not gonna repeat what I said, Walter.
I don't assume that I said a third long time ago, Max, you that half of them came out the morning after you.
Probably about 4:30 maybe.
Mayor, yeah, I'd like to, too, when we talk about that mask ordinance. Now, these are the people that I ran into at work. Some of these same people are all over the grocery stores, all over Walmart, all over everywhere with no mask on and probably some of that 70, some of that, that are positive. So that's, that's why the importance of the mask ordinance to protect the citizens and protect people like myself who have to get out into the community to do shopping or whatever is because these young people are now in, all over our community.
Yes. And, and, and in their defense, the mask, the, the most of them that I see do have masks and they are seeming to take this serious. But it's those times that you let your guard down that, that, you know, all it takes is a few hours and that's it. All it takes is one person.
I don't know if y'all realize our debt numbers or it's really going up a chain. So if you look back at that, look, look at your numbers good and when you make that decision, think about that because they are really rising. So is there anything else we need to discuss tonight? Mr. Griffin, you gonna get back with us? Oh, okay. I think I lost you. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Mr. Jordan and I will be, Mr. Jordan and I will be zooming tomorrow to get, get our, our information correct.
Okay, I think that's what I was about to ask and I was looking at something going backwards.
Not to get Mr. Jordan's information correct, but to get the information correct that we're gonna be discussing.
Okay. I like it. All right. So anybody else have anything else before I ask to adjourn the meeting? All right. Nothing else to be said or discussed? Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, let me look right here and I can tell you. Night, y'all.